Hey, good to see you. See you, hey, good to see you. Hey, good to see you.
This mayor, can I show you something quick? Do you know who Seifert is? All this chopping, can't wait to hear it. He's still, he's gonna hurt everybody if he finds out I did this. Come over here, come over here. Let me take your turn.
How did it? How you doing? Are you dealing with this?
Oh, God.
Oh, this United?
No, I'm dealing with United money.
With all this extra, this must be leave.
Yeah.
You want this one, leave it here. Leave it here. Yep.
God, that's good.
Oh, the time turn.
I can't miss you, baby.
You have some more stuff to put up. You too.
Good to see you. Don't let me hurt you.
Wow.
Good to see you.
Yes, sir. Good to be back.
Who else? Just gonna give me a second.
That's right.
That's right. Need you, need you, baby.
I got you.
You're a miracle person.
Amen. Amen.
I don't wanna hurt you.
Oh, you're fine. Thanks.
Counsel, check your microphones, please. Counsel, check your microphones, please.
God, that's good.
Amen.
One minute. One minute. Sue told me two minutes.
Anybody heard any good jokes lately?
Dr. Miller probably heard of you.
Doc's probably saying something.
I don't think you wanna hear Dr. Miller's jokes.
I was saying, he's got three months worth to catch me up on.
You should be in a robe, you.
Call me no other matter, clerk, if you would call roll, please.
I'm Ash Mayor Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Hood.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mr. Mayo.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Bowler.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here. We have our pledge of allegiance followed by our invocation by Councilman Campbell, followed by our pledge of allegiance, if everybody could please stand.
Could we bow our heads, please? Father, we thank you for a day that has been so beautiful to wake up and to see the sun shining, feel the rays of the heat coming down upon the earth, and let us know that you are still alive and you got all things in your hands. We thank you, Father, for the eleven hundred employees here in the city of Danville to supply the services that are needed. Lord, we thank you tonight for a city council. We thank you for our brother, Councilman Lee Vogel, here, how you've been so good to him and the prayers that went up, and God, you are answering our prayer. And Lord, as we assemble here tonight to work to make our city better, Lord, we thank you for the prosperity, we thank you for each and every councilman, we thank you, Lord, for our city manager, and we ask you to bless it in your name. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wanna say good evening to all of you who are here in the chambers, those of you in the hallway, there are seats on the front row, come on in, to those of you who are here in the chambers, we say good evening, those of you who are viewing us by River City TV, we say good evening to you as well. Oftentimes, when new businesses come into our community, we say welcome home. When new persons come into our community, we say welcome home. When persons return back to our community, we say welcome home. Councilman Vogel, you know these terms, and we'll simply say welcome home. Under the consent agenda, counsel, what's your pleasure? Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded by Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call roll, please.
Vice Mayor Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Bowler.
Aye.
Mr. Little.
City Manager, we have a special presentation among us of one of our outstanding employees of many, so I'm gonna yield to the city manager and he will make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Corey, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium. Few weeks ago, a few of us from Corey's office and some members of council, Councilman Buckner and Councilman Little, and I joined Delegate Marshall and Lisa Meriwether and Tourism and Samantha Bagby in the Economic Development Office, and of course Corey on a trip to Richmond, where she was recognized as one of Virginia's top women leaders. Probably crossed the woman part out of there, she's a top leader in Virginia, so, but that's it, it was a great event. I enjoyed the opportunity to be there, I know that the others that were able to go as well. A lot of highly accomplished people were recognized at that event, they did a very nice job, and I'm sure that those that were in attendance with us would share that same sentiment. And we're, it's a little bit of a production, you've already received the award, and you gave it back to me, and so we're gonna give it back to you again. And I do, I still want an autograph.
Which camera we looking at? Charles, we're looking at you first, Mrs. Charles. And then we look over here, Sue. Mayor.
There's a hefty agenda ahead of us, so I'll make this, make this short and sweet, but I just really, really wanna sincerely thank you guys for recognizing my inclusion in this list by Virginia Business. It is truly an honor to be recognized amongst a list of really pretty amazing women across the Commonwealth, but I just wanna stress that this is not a recognition just because of me, it's really thanks to the collaborative efforts and the collective efforts of the full team within the Economic Development and Tourism Office, and our continued collaboration between all city departments and our regional partners, and it also speaks very highly of the leadership and support from the city administration and each and every member of city council. You know, this November marks my sixteenth year with the city of Danville, and I just wanna express my heartfelt gratitude, each and every year, you all have shown your continued commitment to our economic development and tourism efforts, and because of your vision and your investment, these efforts have been key in the growth we're seeing in our community and our, excuse me, momentum we're seeing across the region, so I just wanted to thank you so much for that support.
Thank you and congratulations, thank you so much. Dr. Miller, you have anything you wanna add?
Yes, Ken took the word right out of my mouth. I would've crossed out the woman, say one of the top leaders in the state. She has meant so much to this community, I've been on the council seventeen years, I remember when she came aboard, and from, when she came aboard, things started going up, 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 so you've done outstanding, y'all, thank you.
Counsel Hood.
Sixteen years, and you never cease to amaze us as the years go along, and you are truly appreciated, you and your team, thank you so much for all that you do, it's greatly appreciated and well deserved.
Counsel Mayor.
Congratulations, Corey, that's a beautiful trophy there, I know we got a good place for you, you're home, as well, congratulations again.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Corey, I don't tell you this often enough, but I'm very, very, very proud of the work that you do for us in the city, very proud of the team that you've built around yourself, and I really appreciate you acknowledging your staff during your reception of the award and here tonight as well, you're just an amazing leader, and we're so very lucky to have you here, thank you so much.
Counsel Campbell.
Yes, we are very extremely proud of you, the hard work that you do, a lot of people don't understand all of the work that you do, and it's beyond the hours being here from eight to five, but we are very thankful, and Danville is a city of great prosperity, and we're moving forward, eyes haven't seen, ears haven't heard, all that God is gonna do in our community, thank you so much.
Counsel Bobler.
Yeah, Corey, you know, the comeback and the revival that our city is undergoing over the last several years, your fingerprints are all over it, very well-earned recognition, and I'm glad we've got you on board, I hope we keep you for a long, long time, but congratulations.
Counsel Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Corey, we are so proud of you, you represent our city well, and Mr. Mayor, Danville is doing so well, this council, our manager, your staff, another example of the kind of leadership we have in our city, and it starts with you, go down to the mayor, and it goes to our staff, and Corey, you represent our staff well, thank you so very, very much.
Councilman Little.
Sure. Corey did a fantastic job, and your staff, it was a pleasure being there, and Delegate Marshall appreciated, you'll invite him too, and he was very, he's very proud of our economic development and all the work that's been done, thank you.
Corey, there's a number of young people here tonight, and I'm so glad we took this time to honor you, so these young people could see so many persons they can emulate, and you being one of those persons, so congratulations again, thank you, let's give her another hand. City Manager, I think we got some more good news.
Yes, there is a. Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is a group here representing the collaborative effort that enabled the city of Danville to be awarded the President's Award at the recent Virginia Municipal League Conference, we were notified ahead of time that we received an innovation award for our Danville Outdoors program, and during the event, we were all surprised to learn that we were honored as the top award amongst those that were. So, I'm gonna ask the folks from the city and outside organizations to come forward, there's a group of you, Bill Screeny, the Parks and Recreation Director, Jason Buchheimer with Parks and Rec, a couple others from Parks and Rec, Public Works, and I think a few other outside organizations, and I'm gonna have to ask for y'all's help in making sure everyone gets properly recognized, but these are, you know, Danville's been recognized before, and so we continue to do innovative things, and so we were very pleased to be able to put in actually seven applications this year for innovation awards in all seven categories, and we're awarded this one, and it got the President's Award, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jason to tell us a little bit more about the program and anything else you wanna say, and introduce the group as well, of course.
Thank you all for having us here tonight, and thank you for our partners that are standing with us tonight. Danville Outdoors, as you may remember, earlier in this year, was also recognized for a nature everywhere community first in the state, and the work that we're doing would be possible without the people who are here in this room, and also their, our community partners have worked diligently to take nature and outdoor opportunities to every person in our community, and when the President was making his remarks, the one thing he recognized was the fact that we are dedicated, and this has been going on for years, and we're doing the right things the right way, and I think it's a powerful statement that the city of Danville and what we're doing and our partners care about our community, we're moving things forward, as we just heard with Corey, and we're just so proud to be standing alongside of all of our partners. Maggie does have a list in her head that we would like to recognize really quick, 'cause they all were not here, but we do thank you for the support that goes on and the work that we get to do in the community for these, for these folks.
Hi, y'all, thank you guys, and again, thank you to all of our partners that are standing behind us, not all of them are here, but we appreciate each and every one of you for all of your efforts, I'm gonna try really hard to remember all of them, but if I forget, please holler at me, but Danville Parks and Recreation, Danville Public Works, Danville Public Schools, Danville Science Center, the Virginia Cooperative Extension, Danville Master Gardeners, the Virginia Master Naturalist, Dan River Basin Association, Garden Club of Danville, the Gabriella Garden Club, the Nature and Everywhere Network, School Field Elementary Schools, Nature Club. Again, it's a lot of partners, and again, we're so excited that all of them are working with us and that we have accomplished all of these great projects for the city, and thank you.
Anyone else? Someone needs to introduce the team that's standing behind you, someone introduce those young people standing behind you.
Absolutely, so we've got Jason Buchheimer, and then right next to him, we have Jessica Smith from Public Works, Horticulture, also heads up a lot of our projects, like our tree plantings, the Bee City Committee, all of the things, Sonia Wallen, which is with Virginia Master Naturalists, behind her Brenda Roland, with the Bee City Committee, and the Garden Club of Danville, and then we have Bill, we have Lisa Winter with the Garden Club of Danville, and then Krista Bigro with the Garden and Garden Club, and then we have a Master Gardener. Liz Russell with Garden Club of Danville, but that's all the people with us tonight.
Back to the city manager, you know, you're smiling.
So, congratulations again, while we were getting our award, and it was great, thank you for all the work, and we get, some of us got to go up there and take a little bit of credit for it, even though we didn't do all the work, but we always, like you said, Jason, we appreciate the support of council to be able to convene people to get together, but also the resources that are provided to us to be able to make our city a beautiful place for people to enjoy, so that the outdoors is something that people can have a lot of fun in. And by the way, speaking of fun, during the VML conference, we didn't get to hear this because the, there's a Communications Director for VML, who I guess is a part-time comedian, also was doing poems, and my wife makes fun of me for the way I pronounce poem, but anyway...
Are you saying, I was wondering, are you saying poems, or are you saying palms?
I don't know which ones.
Me and your wife will talk.
But we didn't get to hear the poem, so I asked them to, asked him to send it to me, so I'm gonna read this poem, so y'all can hear it. "Four walls and a ceiling are just fine for some, but in Danville, the outdoors were calling for all to come, so a grand partnership came together of naturally-minded folks, they created a hub to replace the collection of separately spinning spokes, ladybug releases, projects in parks, and equal opportunity made Danville, Virginia's first nature everywhere community." You had city members who were telling a poem at a city council meeting on your bingo card. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think council has some comments, and then we're going to invite you all up to take a picture as well. Councilman Campbell.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, and to the city of Danville, uh, being at the VML, I have never been so proud, being on city council, to see what happened that night at the VML, to see the city of Danville get two major awards. No one else, many other cities got it that night. It was just outstanding. We just shined, and to look at all the other people out there looking at us, the company didn't get the big one at the end. I mean, it was just out of sight. I want to commend you personally for the work. I don't think the city of Danville knows sometimes, Mr. Mayor, of just how great, I remember being first being on council back in many years ago when I had hair, but it was dark and bleak, and to see Danville now with prosperity, getting major awards like what we're doing right now, I'd just say that I commend you, and, uh, eyes haven't seen, ears haven't heard, yeah, all that's going to come our way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Jason, as Councilman Campbell stated, correct me if wrong, the President's Award is the highest award.
Yes.
Wow. Councilor Butler.
Um, congratulations to the team. I hated to miss VML this year. I almost got back in time for it, but, um, I, all I heard from my colleagues was how amazing it was, so I'm proud of you guys, and let's keep up the great work.
Councilor Thomas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a child, my grandfather always told his grandchildren, always take care of your Danville's name is known all over the world, literally, certainly in the United States of America. We're very fortunate to have not just eleven hundred employees who are great, but all the citizens who live here, those who made this possible and no longer here, but their family, their spirit, and their work, their labor is producing good things from what they did. And I just want to say to everyone, thank you for taking care of our name. Danville's name is very, very important. And, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you, uh, noticing the pronunciation of the word that Mr., uh, manager made, but for those who did not know, the manager was an English major in college.
Councilman Miller.
So I just stand on the shoulders of giants, and, and I just, um, I, I was there for the event, and y'all did a fantastic job, and I'm proud of everything y'all done. Thank you.
Dr. Miller.
Yeah, this was the highlight of the conference. Uh, we attended a lot of round tables and so forth, but that, that's the main, that was the highlight. Put in perspective, any of you ever watched the Westminster Dog Show? You got the top chariot, you got the top herding dog, you got the top lapdog, you got the top herding dog, show dog, but the winner, the top dog, best in show in the whole state of Danville, says it all.
Vice Mayor. President's Award, um, you know, congratulations are truly in, truly in order for you all. Thank you so much. You know, a lot of times we look at infrastructure and brick and mortar, but to actually focus and give us something great to brag about and talk about as far as in nature, we thank you all so much. Congratulations. Councilor Mayor.
I'd like to take that trophy right there home with me. I had the chance to hold it, and that gold around there, my wife, I know she'll love a ring, being right there, but I want to say congratulations to each and every one of you. I tell you, uh, Dr. Miller had every tickle when he said, uh, the dogs, right? She called them top dogs?
Top dogs.
I'm going to call them atomic dogs. Good job, everyone.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, it was an amazing event, a great night, celebrating our staff and the things that you guys do, but also to recognize the folks that make it happen behind you. Uh, like, uh, uh, man, city manager Larkin said, you know, you guys make us look really good. Like, give us a lot of credit for the things that you guys do, and we deserve none of it, because you guys are at it full steam every day, every weekend. Sonya, I see you everywhere. You are everywhere, helping everywhere you can, and it is very much appreciated. You guys make us look great, and thank you for it.
To our guys in the control room, I'm getting messages that persons cannot hear us on TV. I don't know if it has anything to do with us, but if you all can, if it's on our end, just want to make you aware of that. Uh, just want to let you all know that most mayors across the country do a state of the city, a state of the region. I have already spoken with our leadership team here, and coming soon, it's going to, instead of me doing a state of the region or a state of the city, it's going to be, um, we're going to talk about all the awards that the city of Danville has received this year. It has been absolutely astounding, and one of the reasons why I wanted to do that is because there's, as the council member has stated and the staff has stated, just a few minutes ago, you saw us honoring Cory, and now we're honoring you all, and there's so many more. And one of the reasons I want to do that is because this is my opportunity and council's opportunity, before this year is out, to say thank you to all of the citizens and all of the partners who not only supported the city, but also supported Danville Public Schools. And the reason we want to put that out there is because we were counted out.
That's right.
The city was counted out, Danville Public Schools was counted out. So you'll be looking forward to that coming out real soon, and I think it's going to astound people, because we go very fast as I close, but this was the top award, uh, for the state of VML. We received the top award from the President's, and so to those of you who have supported us and who have continuously supported us, and to those of you who sent here before this, we can't thank you enough, but our thank you is going to be forthcoming, and we sincerely say thank you. We ask you to come forward there for a picture, and council come and join us for a picture. Are we going to get Charles, are we going to get Charles first over here? Charles is sitting down with a pretty shirt on.
He's great.
Then we'll look over here with all these cameras. Thank you, also. He's like, thank you all. Going to call Dr. Harrison now, our superintendent. We have a special proclamation. Good evening, Dr. Harrison. Whereas the citizens of Danville stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe and engaging learning experiences that help children realize the full potential to support their academic growth and well-being. Support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive when they are out of their classrooms. Help address key issues in our communities such as school absenteeism, learning loss recovery, and workforce development. Build stronger communities by involving students, parents, businesses, and volunteers in the lives of our young people. After-school provides a solid return on investment. Every one dollar invested in after-school programs saves at least three dollars by increasing kids' earning potential, improving kids' performance at school, and reducing crime and juvenile delinquency. And whereas after-school programs provide critical support for children and youth, offering them new experiences and opportunities, along with hands-on learning that help them learn and grow. Youth who attend after-school programs attend school more often, they do better in school, and gain important work and life skills. These supports are all the more important today, and whereas the Dan River Region After-School Time Network is committed to the education and well-being of our youth, and recognizes that quality after-school program prepares our children to become successful adults and help our communities thrive. And whereas, Lights On After-School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs for our children, families, and communities, and whereas the demand for after-school programs continue to grow, for every child in a program four are waiting to get in, and whereas many after-school programs are facing operating challenges so severe that they are forced to consider closing their doors and turning off their lights. And whereas the city of Danville is committed to providing expanding learning opportunities that help our children learn, grow, and develop the skills essential for success in life and work. And therefore, Angelia Jones and Mr. Danville City Councils of the city of Danville do proclaim October the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five as Lights On After-School Day, and the city of Danville and the Danville City Council enthusiastically endorses Lights On After-School and commits our community to engage in innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure that lights stay on and the doors stay open for all our children who are in this twenty-first of October. You may have some comments, and let's give her a big hand.
Thank you so ma, thank you so much, Ms. Jones. Yes, I proudly serve as superintendent of Danville Public Schools. So glad to be joined this evening by our school board members, I'm the dean, Mr. Pang.
Please stand, school board, please stand and join Dr. Harrison. Please come on up and join Dr. Harrison.
We have Mr. Kenny Lewis, father of after-school programs here in Danville. Actually, this evening, I'm representing Kathy Gore, president and CEO of United Way of the Danville, Pennsylvania County United Way. She is receiving a proclamation this evening in the county. The United Way of Danville Public Schools, of, of Danville, Pennsylvania County's, uh, Board of Directors is part of a strategic vision, has committed to achieving a long-term collective impact on access to childcare and after-school programs by pioneering community-driven solutions for Danville and Pennsylvania County. We first recognize that quality childcare is essential, not only for well-being of children and families, but as a cornerstone of workforce participation and economic development in our region. In alignment with this priority, United Way has launched a Danville Region Out-of-School Time Network in partnership with the Danville Regional Foundation. This initiative was born from a growing awareness of the intersection between access to childcare and the critical role of out-of-school time programs in supporting families. The purpose and goals of this network include fostering strong communication relationships among local stakeholders, promoting shared cooperation, learning, and coordinated action. Moving forward, there will be virtual calls, quarterly in-person gatherings, and links to state-level efforts. We warmly invite all of you in the community to participate in our efforts to build a stronger network for children through the out-of-school time. And again, Kathy Gore is sad that she could not be here this evening. She's receiving a proclamation for, uh, this event in the county, and thank you so much for this proclamation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harrison. Thank you all for being here. Give her another hand. Before we go to appointments, council, we are so appreciative of all of our partners, and council right now is going to, each individual asks you all for your help. We are in the midst of a government shutdown, and it's been forestated that possibly November the first, persons who get SNAP benefits and any assistance, it may go away. What we don't want to happen in the city of Danville is we don't want any soul to go hungry.
Yes.
So council's going to pause before we go to appointments, and council members are going to issue a plea to our community. We don't know if this is going to happen or not, but we want to be very proactive. Our next meeting will not be until, not the first Tuesday in November because of election, it'll be the first Thursday in November. But we want to make sure we do our part as a council to plead to our community, to help us in some way make sure that every kid is fed, every person is fed, and that with so many great things happening in our community, that we don't have souls in our community going hungry. Councilman Campbell, you lead.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a heavy burden on me, uh, even at the VML on the Tuesday morning, that session, and just to hear some of the things that were said, I, I, I was just choked up and almost just broke down and cried. Danville is a great city. We are a city of churches, and there are many different agencies that we just need to work together, and I, I have worked with many years with, uh, feeding the hungry, and, and, and sometimes, I want to be honest, Mr. Mayor, sometimes, yeah, people go off from place to place. You know, everything should be done in decency and order. If we're going to be in a crisis, then, uh, I feel that the spirit of God, believing God everybody in the right way. Some people are not going to buy it anyway, but, uh, I, 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 this, this is a heavy burden that I have been for quite a while, but I just know that, uh, the love of Danville and what, what we are in this city, we are people of character. We are a great city. We are a great city, and I just believe in a time of crisis, we're going to work together like we never have before, and I, I'm a Rotarian, and we, a lot of the, uh, members work with, uh, uh, the, a place of work, of more drive.
Housewives.
Yes, God Storehouse, right, and, uh, we have the House of Hope and other agencies out there too, but this is a crucial time, it's a critical time within America that we have, and we want to keep praying for our country and for our city. Thank you.
Councilor Butler, you want to add anything?
Um, no, I mean, I think y'all stated it well. I mean, you know, in the past, we've stepped up and done things to, to help our community, particularly when it comes to the youth, and so I'm glad you brought this up tonight, Mayor, and I hope, um, like they always have, Danville, you step up, and so I know we will in this case too. Thank you.
Councilor Thomas.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate, Mr. Mayor, you bringing this to our attention, and I know that people in our city are very caring, caring people and very, very helpful. I think back to the time I was a child, going to my church, we can't talk about the church out in Ringo, and we would take food to church for people who didn't have food. They couldn't afford food, whether it be a pound of butter, a gallon of buttermilk, uh, some biscuits, chocolate cake, whatever it was, we gave people food, beans, greens, you name it. Now, the program in this country called a meal's on wheels, and it's basically for senior citizens, age of sixty and up, and for those who cannot come to a meal site, there are people who drive to their home every day to take them a hot meal, and it's so sad when staff come back to view their reports, how they see situations that are very, very sad. I can think of at least two occasions before I retired, when staff went to deliver meals to the elderly, the house was, the houses were on fire, and they had to pull them out. So a meal's on wheels is not just a meal, so when you, when you take food to someone, you're not just feeding them, you're also giving them life, you're giving them hope, all these things. So, yes, uh, let's make sure that we give all we can. If we don't have the food, money, buy food. And right now, we don't know what the future is, things are tight, I will not get into a whole lot of politics about government shutdown, federal and state fund, I won't do that. I'm just saying that we are caring people here, we love each other, we support each other, and I'm sure that Danville will step up like we always have to help those who are in need. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, you want to add anything?
Sure, we got, um, Pastor Willis Farrell had a food drive today, um, and that won't go dry, and I'll make sure of that, and also Ralph Rhimes will push in and help in any capacity that he can, and I'll make sure that doesn't go dry either.
Thank you. Councilman, Dr. Miller.
Yeah, I heard this week, uh, that from God Storehouse, a lot of the food they get, of course donated globally, but they get, uh, on the secondary food market, they get imperfect foods, foods that are not sold in grocery stores or warehouses, and they're grants, uh, give these foods to God Storehouse. Well, this week, the company, the major company lost the grants that they have, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of food, uh, money that they can't, they don't have anymore to buy this food on the secondary food market. Hence, God Storehouse is a major blow. Uh, they are appealing each and every one of you to bring. blow. They are appealing each and every one of you to bring food. They feed two to three hundred families a week, God Storehouse. Any of you have been volunteers there? They need help. People need help. If they don't, they can't provide this food, these people will starve, their families will starve, children will starve. Please help them. Thank you.
Councilman Hood.
Yes, as I always say, Danville, we've always been a given city. We've always stepped up to the plate when we need donation, when we need help. We are, you know, we've always been a given city. But we just ask sometimes to, you know, with this ordinance possible to come down the line, just be the village. We are Danville. You know, I consider Danville one big family that just only dinner together, you know, at certain times. Various food giveaways. I work with the Balance Estate, which is a C O T, continuum of care. So I work with homeless every single day to where on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, we provide showers and wash the clothes. Plus, we provide food that we have. You'd be amazed at the people, you know, the food desert that's out here. But just various food giveaways that I can think of, you know, again, to back off of what Councilman Widdell said, Redemption Church, which is a warming center with Pastor Farrell, Remnant Church, The Will, Moffett, North Main Street, Salvation Army, we got Dustin and Katie and Nana Karen, they have their own ministry that they give food away as well. Ralph Rhines, who is a God-sent, actually, he's with God's Final Calling warning. This Sunday, the twenty-sixth, from three to five on four oh two Wilson Street, he will be doing a food, clothes, and housing item giveaway. He does it once a month. It's the most amazing thing you could actually see. And I think that continues to help because I feel like it's going to be really overwhelmed moving forward with this. But I believe in our city. I believe in our citizens. You know, we all one big family. If we could all just, you know, make sure we stay encouraged, it will be those who, you know, if this possibly happened, it may be those who may be seeking just a little help, just a little help. And it can go a long way because, again, if we look at it from a nationwide perspective, but we can look at it from a Danville perspective, what we've always done is always been able to help and step up to the plate when the times come of helping. So let's just keep each other in each other's prayers and just, you know, see what happens from this, see what happens from this. But again, we've always had a giving heart, so hopefully we continue to be able to do so.
Councilman.
Yes, just want to echo on what I just heard from each and every one of us, which everyone has a good point here. And just to know that Danville has done the remarkable when it comes down to whatever we have to do for our citizens, we do it with all the churches and God Storehouse, Salvation Army, and all the agencies who are in need of helping people. This is a time that we can actually start getting together and do all we can to help not only our women and children, but our seniors and just everybody. You just can't miss anybody in homelessness. So this is the time that we definitely have to come together. I know we will do it. I know we can do it. Let's rally everybody. Let's make it.
Yeah, just, I mean, everybody else has said it so well. Please, if you can, give often and frequently to organizations that are out here doing the good work for the people of the city of Danville and the surrounding area. I know that God Storehouse and their crew of folks down there are doing outstanding job for the people of this area. And it's kind of terrifying to think what a six hundred and fifty dollar deficit in their budget is going to look like to the citizens of Danville. It's absolutely horrifying to think. I'm going to yield my time back to Councilman Hood. If you could give that list one more time. And I'm also going to add one request of you. Could you please later tonight put that on your Facebook page so we can share it, where folks can go to actually receive help when it's needed.
Also, Councilman Hood, also give that address again slowly for the food giveaway on Sunday.
Yes, I will. Mr. Rhines is four oh two Wilson Street. It's at three o'clock, three to five. People usually airline around twelve noon down there. It's food giveaways, clothing, housing items, cleaning products. He do it once a month. And that's four oh two Wilson Street, right downtown Danville, Virginia, three P M to five P M. And again, to have some of the food giveaways, we have Redemption Church, which is warming center, The Will, Remnant, Moffett, Salvation Army, and Nana Karen's, which is on Main Street. Katie and Dustin has a food ministry that they give away also. And also, God Storehouse needs donations again, too. For those that I missed, I apologize. I just didn't know everybody's name. But I will continue to collect resources and be able to provide that as I possibly can.
Our leadership team has already started meeting. I will yield to our city manager, but I just want to say this to Councilman Vogler. You issued a plea for reminding all of the media citizens that you'll be back. And once again, you've done something that's totally astounding. All of these cameras right here, I'm hoping that they would help us get the word out that we need help, just in case these persons do not get SNAP benefits. And what a perfect time to let these persons know to help individuals. I'm going to yield to the city manager, and then we'll wrap it up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Dr. Harrison and her team in Danville Public Schools. We had a meeting today. She helped us be more aware of the challenges and what they're doing as a school system to step up and help young people. Of course, they only serve school-age children, but they are looking at ways to make sure that children in our school system don't go hungry. You know, the holiday season is coming up, so we, you know, that's very important. They do this over the summer and other breaks as well. So this isn't just something that we're doing for any one occurrence. This is something they do as a matter of course. So I wanted to thank Dr. Harrison and her team for that and putting that work in to make sure that happens. And also, I want to thank our team that met along with her to look at ways to get the word out here. And thank you to Councilman Mayor for what you just said, for everything that you said and getting that information out to people. I encourage people to give because, you know, it's a multiple-step process. We need first, people to give so that later people can receive when they need it. And so no time like the present to start doing that. Thank you.
Just maybe I want to just thank for one second, just imagine in your mind a person hungry, a person that doesn't have any food. And now imagine in our school system, a young person or even adult, a teacher, a capitol worker, a custodian, a nurse. Now imagine those persons walking around in the schools on their jobs, trying to figure out to be productive in their hunger. So I'm asking you all, please, to join us. This is serious. We don't know what's going to happen all of a sudden. But we, Terrell Payne and myself, you've heard a number of churches that Councilman Hood has mentioned, but we've identified about eight churches on the south side. Correct me if I'm wrong, Terrell, we've identified some churches on the north side. We've identified churches on fifty-eight east and west that we're going to be reaching out to, to see if we can get some help before this happens. And it's very unfortunate, but as Sharon stated, we won't get into politics here. It's a book of agencies in our community. But anything that you can do to help those persons, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Mayor, could it be listed on our television screen?
Please.
All the different places out there.
Yes. Everything that we can do, as the city manager stated, he and Dr. Harrison and Mr. Vogler and others have met, and they're going to be putting something together so our persons can be. And please do not be ashamed or embarrassed, or don't feel little if you don't have food. You've heard persons here speak tonight, there are places that will help you. On Sunday, Mark, I hope you put that out there, on Sunday, there's going to be food giveaway. Put your pride aside, think about yourself, and just, Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. Give credit where credit is due. Mr. Phil Pace, will you please stand? Mr. Pace, will you please stand? This is the former mayor of the town of Chatham. He's also worked for Congressman Robert Hurt in Washington, D.C. Like many others, I was there on one occasion in particular, and I had to go to some meetings, and I wasn't sure how to get there. He gave me a tour of the entire Capitol, walked me through, and got me back to Amtrak in time to get back home. Mr. Pace, feel free to move to Danville, sir. We love to have your tax money and your citizenship. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The words will, will, and what I told Councilman Vogler when he got here tonight, welcome home.
I just came from a townhouse meeting, but I want to see, leave, God bless this community.
Great. I'm going to do this again to make sure I got it done right, because the attorney will make sure. Under the consent agenda, Vice Mayor, would you approve that consent agenda?
Yes, I would make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the role plans.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Saunders?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the appointments back to you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a follow-up recommendation for consideration of appointments to the boards and commissions. A resolution reappointing Robert Stowe as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review. A resolution reappointing Lawrence Meter as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review Board to fill an unexpired term. A resolution reappointing Janet Gwynn as a member of the Community Improvement Council. A resolution reappointing Casey Cunningham as a member of the Community Improvement Council. A resolution appointing Tyquan Graves as a member of the Danville Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And a resolution reappointing James Turner to the West Piedmont Planning District Commission.
Second, Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the role plans.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Under all business consideration of authorizing the issuance of bonds of the city of Danville, Virginia, I proudly yield to you, Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, the move we adopt in ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds of the city of Danville, Virginia, and the maximum aggregate principal amount of eleven million dollars to finance various expenditures for governmental purposes.
Second, I, Dr. Miller, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the role plans.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Will?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
I review, General Funtz, Michael, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. Back at this evening, you'll find our general fund financial results through the end of September. That does mark the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-six complete, or twenty-five percent of our fiscal year complete. With regards to revenues, they are very comparable to last year. Through September, we've collected twenty-eight point two million compared to last year, about twenty-eight million even. Collections of delinquent real estate continues to be very strong. So far, we've collected about six hundred and sixty thousand. This is already fifty-eight percent of our budget. That tends to pull off a little bit in the coming months. We do have another public auction of abandoned properties scheduled in this room on December the eleventh noon for renovation. Our current year real estate and personal property tax bills are being generated now. They will go out in the mail first week of November, of course, with the due date of December fifth. As far as local taxes go, our business licenses continue to perform very comparable to last year. We've collected six hundred and twenty thousand in the first quarter. That's up about two thousand dollars from last year. However, the number of business licenses is dramatically higher. That's fifty-two additional licenses in the first quarter of this year compared to last year. With regard to meals tax, that is on track of budget. We've collected just over twenty-five percent at this point, which comes to about three point three even. Our lodging tax is exceeding our budgeted expectations. We've collected about thirty percent, or one point one million at this point. Sales tax is the only consumer-driven tax that's slightly behind budget. I mentioned that last month. We've collected over twenty-three percent, but we're not quite at twenty-five percent. So that's about a two hundred thousand dollar difference between the twenty-five percent mark. However, sales tax is not collected even throughout the year. As you know, our holiday sales tend to be the highest months that we receive sales tax. So expect we'll see some increases in January, February. They'll probably push itself back to budgeted level, but we'll certainly keep an eye on that, keep you informed. Regarding casino taxes, the casino had very profitable months for July and August, very average months for September. But however, our current amount of casino taxes we've collected or doing is nine point two million. This is about four percentage points ahead of budget at this point. We would have expected that to be around eight million if it were going to be budgeted for this year. All other state and federal revenues are coming in on track of budgets, no concerns there. Regarding expenditures, our departmental expenditures are at twenty-three percent of budget. We typically run about one or two percent behind budget through the years, where regularly should be there. Regarding non-departmental expenditures, as a reminder, that's exclusively debt service and group health insurance. That's currently at thirty-seven percent of budget. The reason that is so far up, nearly half of our debt service is due in September each year. So we've already made about half of our debt service payments for this year, which drives that percentage up. Our group health insurance is pretty close to budget, a little bit over a couple of percentage points. Nothing to be concerned of right now. For information, as you may already know, the employee contribution is slightly increased, but collectively, it does make a difference. And so that will offset that. That increase will come to effect in January. Most of our budget is allocated to capital projects, has already been transferred. So if you're looking at the bottom line, you see a significant deficit. That is very normal for the first part of the year. As we transfer all of those funds over, of course, that revenue will be coming in to cover that throughout the rest of this year. Regarding our fiscal twenty-five audit, it is always complete. I would say over the next four weeks, we should receive our signed audit report. I'm not aware of any adjustments or concerns expressed by the auditors at this time. And inconsistency with what I've reported in the past, our unassigned fund balance or the regular fund for the city should increase about three million dollars for fiscal twenty-five. So that will increase from fifty-one million at the end of twenty-four to fifty-four million at the end of twenty-five. To compare that to our policy, which is twenty-five percent of our budgeted revenues, that puts us at about twenty-nine percent of our budgeted revenues gives the city about an eight million dollar above, over the forty-six million that's required by policy. So that's all I have this month. Mr. Mayor, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Great job. Thank you so much. Just want to let you all know, council, that people are stepping up. The AKAs have reached out and said that every third Saturday at four twenty Harbrook Street at the Mary B. Yancey Home, they have a food, bank, and toiletries every third Saturday. To those of you at home who are saying you're having difficulties with the sound, it's not us, it's Xfinity. So you may want to contact your Xfinity persons because we've checked everything here. Mark Aaron has assured me, the sound is not on our end, it's on Xfinity's end. Consideration of authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with American Municipal Power Transmission, I hope in the public hearing, anyone desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Councilman Campbell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter to a contract or contracts for the sale of municipal-owned transmission access to AMP Transmission LLC in the area of American Municipal Power Incorporated, AMP.
Second, Councilman Widdell, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the role plans.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Consideration of the sale of one point seven five acres of city-owned property on Livestock Road in Pennsylvania County, I hope in the public hearing, anyone desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve a resolution of the city council in the city of Danville, Virginia, declaring certain city-owned properties to be surplus to the needs of the city and approving the authorization and sale of one point seven five acres of real property in Pennsylvania County identified as parcel of two four zero, I'm sorry, two four two zero dash seven four dash eight zero four eight for a price of five thousand dollars and all closing costs.
Second, Councilman Widdell, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the role plans.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
And Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Consideration of resolution authorizing an amendment to the city urban enterprise zone number one, I hope in the public hearing, anyone desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Councilman Campbell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the resolution authorizing the city manager to submit to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development an enterprise zone amendment application for the city urban enterprise zone one.
Second, Vice Mayor, discussion of the motion.
Yeah, somebody tell them about that. Sure, we've got Calco Harry, our Assistant Economic Development Director here, who can speak to this subject.
Yeah. Captain, good evening, sir. Councilman Widdell has a question.
Yes. Just bring your speaker on, please. So we participate in a state program whereby we incentivize those businesses that have actually capital projects and improve the overall economic vitality in the community. Exactly. In this particular case, we're just taking out acreage of some woodlands in the Schofield area and then police station and expanding it along Rubus High Drive.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Calum. Madam Clerk, if you would call the role plays.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayhew?
Aye.
Consideration of the issuance of general obligations bonds for capital project, Councilman Saunders?
I move, Vice Mayor, a new approval of a resolution providing for the issuance, sale, and award of the City of Danville in one or more series of general obligation public improvement bonds. Herefore, authorize and providing for the form, details, and payment of such bonds.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the role plays.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayhew?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Consideration of amending chapter thirty-four of the code of the City of Danville, Virginia relating to local wastewater limit discharges and contract hauls, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Danville, Virginia, amending chapter thirty-four, sections twelve, sixteen, and twenty of the City of Danville, Virginia Municipal Code related to wastewater, local discharge limits, and contract hauls.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the role plays.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayhew?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Saunders?
Aye.
Consideration of resolution confirming appointments to the Community Criminal Justice Board, Councilman Saunders?
I move, Vice Mayor, a new approval amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget appropriation ordinance for the victim witness grant program, council letter number twenty, C.O.L. twenty-three seventy-four. And ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a grant from the state for a victim witness program in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand, twenty-five dollars, a local mass of one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, for a total of one hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, and appropriating the same.
They'll do G for me. G, G.
G? Okay. Consideration of a new approval of resolution confirming appointment of the Community Criminal Justice Board.
Second by Vice Mayor, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the role plays.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayhew?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Councilman Saunders read H. Second by Councilman Mayo for first reading. Under I, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve an ordinance amending fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget appropriation ordinance to provide for the grant of the Virginia Department of Emergency Management in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Danville nine-one-one Emergency Services Communication Center for total appropriation in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and appropriating the same in this first reading.
Second by Dr. Miller, first reading. Consideration of amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget appropriation ordinance for one Southern Virginia Program Grant from Virginia Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission. Back to you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget appropriation ordinance for the one Southern Virginia Program Grant, number two four, um, four two seven five, in the amount of two million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, ninety-five dollars from Virginia Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission and appropriating the same in this first reading.
Second by Councilman Campbell, first reading. Consideration of amending fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget appropriation ordinance to provide funding to Danville Life Saving Crew, Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget appropriation ordinance to provide funding from unassigned general fund balance to provide additional funding to the Danville Life Saving Crew in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars and appropriating the same. First reading.
Second by Councilman Whittle, first reading. Consideration of amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget appropriation ordinance by anticipating the proceeds from the issuance of general obligations bonds, Councilman Campbell?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I make an order amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget appropriation orders by anticipating the proceeds from the issue of bonds and appropriating the same for anticipation of expenditures.
Second by Councilman Mayo, first reading. Consideration of amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget appropriation ordinance for a Department of Criminal Justice School Resource Officer Grant, back to you, Councilman Campbell?
Yes, Vice Mayor, an order amending fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget appropriation orders by increasing the revenue from Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Service fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six School Resource Officer Grant Program in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and locally share in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars for total appropriation of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and appropriating the same.
Second by Councilman Saunders, first reading. Under communications, City Manager?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Vogler, it's great to see you.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager?
Uh, nothing to see, wonderful to see you, sir.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Uh, Vice Mayor, it is sure nice-
Pull that microphone over to you.
It's sure nice to have nine votes on all of these tonight and to have our Councilman Whittle back, welcome back, and continue to pray for you. Uh, also, I wanted to remind something that you spoke about earlier in the meeting. Our November fourth meeting, which would be the first meeting of the council, will be moved to the sixth because November fourth is election day.
Thank you, sir. Sue Carter? Will Lee's family stand up? Lee's family, Lee's family stand up, all of Lee's family. All of Lee's family. I just got a message for you all. He's okay tonight. I saw the look on your face, Mama. He's okay. He's doing well. Y'all have a seat. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Buckner?
Yeah, uh, brother, we're so happy to have you back. Welcome home. As the mayor said earlier, you are home amongst those who are here, and we're so happy to have you back with us. I'd like to thank everyone that came out to the Food Truck Rodeo this past weekend. Again, just an amazing time, and just it blows my mind how many folks come out and the, uh, the broad spectrum of folks that come out. Nothing brings folks together more than good food and good times and good music. So it always does my heart well to see everyone in this community, every corner of the community represented there. It really, really makes my heart smile for sure. I'm gonna beat all of y'all to this because, yeah, I'll let me go first. There's a couple of flyers here on our desk of things that are going on in the city. Monster Mash, the ninth annual Monster Mash is a free event at the Community Market on October thirty-first. Uh, the fun begins at five P.M. There'll be activities for the family, trunk or treat, inflatables, face painting, characters, photo booths, and so much more. You can also register your trunk as a group or individual to pass out candy for trunk or treat. There's no fee to enter, so if you feel the need to go out and feed fifteen hundred kids candy, please, please, please do so. There's nothing like it in the world, the smiling faces, the beautiful costumes. The wonderful people and times and memories that you create there are just, uh, it just warms your heart, that's for sure. Uh, that's sponsored by U.R.W., Karen's Hallmark, David Sattfield State Farm, and of course, the City of Danville. For more information, go to playdanvilleva.com. Boom. Call it somebody else's. That's all I got to say.
If you, if you call it the, it's called Market Monster Mash, but if you ever seen a trunk or treats and trick or treating, when I grew up, it was called Trick or Treaty. So if you want to go Trick or Treaty, we didn't have a Market Monster Mash. It was Trick or Treaty. So if you want to go Trick or Treaty, go down to the Community Market.
I don't think anybody here ready just gonna be down there.
I had to stand up because you all, you told the city manager, but he said, "Oh, man." So I'm saying Trick or Treat. Madam Clerk, back to you. I'm sorry. I tried to get everybody eight o'clock, but Councilman Buckner called it the Market Monster Mash. Trick or Treat. Back to you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, uh, I just want to reiterate what we talked about a few minutes ago about the community. We are living in uncertain, unpredictable times. Uh, I remember going to church, speaking somewhere in another church, and they had a request for prayer. And I heard fear. I heard people being laid off, uh, certain situation with homes. You know, a lot of people in our community are proud. And what's happening now is, uh, it really is, it's almost scary. It's scary. It's scary times. But in the midst of what's going on, this opportunity, it can draw us together. And we can appreciate what our community is made of. And that's, that's what I'm hearing from my council tonight, what I'm hearing from the love that we have, that in times like this, in times like this, you know, we, we gonna, we gonna beat this thing. We gonna beat this thing. And I'm just, I'm just turned on. I mean, I don't want to cry, I know I'm getting old, my sense of milk, I lost my hair and all that stuff. But my point is, we are a great city. We are a great city. I can't say it enough. We, we hear the financial report and see all the things that are happening, but yet I hear the concern about those people who may be going through certain things. And we want to harness that. We want to build upon that. And whatever we, as councilmen, as, as the city council and the city, with the city manager, uh, deficit manager, we, we going to stick together and we gonna move forward. We are going to move forward. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Hood?
There's a couple more that I want to, uh, to call from Miss Cynthia Dion at six oh nine Keene Streets, the old Allen Building. Um, changing lives outreach. Uh, every fourth Saturday from twelve noon to one thirty, they do include, uh, uh, West Main Baptist, I will be receiving more information on that. And I also receive a message just now, at Cafe DeVille on four one South Ridge Street will be feeding all children for free starting November the first, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from three thirty P.M. to six thirty P.M.
Now go back, go back to that. Where is that at, once again?
Four zero, well, four oh one South Ridge Street.
And what, what times are they gonna be serving young people?
Okay, starting November the first, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from three thirty to six thirty. And I want to give a massive, massive, massive welcome to our originator of the Comeback City, AKA the Comeback Kid. Your will and dedication to serve this city and community goes untested. Your resilience, your faith, your faith in God, your family, your support group, and just the many of us who are in full support of you for serving is, is, is astounding. It's truly astounding, but we thank you because we know your dedication to this city and you appreciate it. And just to see that smile again is, is, is a lot, it means a lot to us. So welcome back, all.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes, uh, Lee has always been, you've already been echoed. It's so good to see you. When I looked up, I just saw you, it just shook me for a minute because I didn't know what the specter saw you, but you look good. You look good, and we are with you. We'll always be with you. This is a team here, and you're part of the team, and welcome back to the team. Um, also, uh, it's good to see everybody here today, tonight. Uh, my friends, the junior organizers, raise your hand on this. Always good to see you guys. Uh, and I just want to echo out at all the crisis that we're going through. Uh, Mayor, with, uh, food stamps, uh, uh, just not enough said, but we definitely have to be in prayer for all the citizens who are receiving these services because I can imagine myself, if you just, uh, not, don't know if you're gonna be getting what you gotta do and what you wanna do, especially when you have young children and our seniors and just anybody. So let's, uh, I know we can rally. Uh, I just, uh, know that our church, Van Street, Van Street Mission Baptist Church, they do a food giveaway on Thursdays, Saturdays, uh, a box, big box meal, and, and they also, uh, uh, have a clothing card to give away also. Uh, we can do anything. Our city, we can do anything. We do, and we do it and do it well. Let's continue to do that and work together. I love what we're doing here tonight. We're actually getting out that information right now. We're starting now. We don't want to wait till tomorrow. It's starting now. Mayor, good job. Thank you, and thank everybody tonight.
Let me help you out. Dawn, please stand up. We want to recognize, could, stand up, no. That's his wife, right there. Give her a hand.
Dr. Miller?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing the crisis to our attention and rallying people to be this, this is a crisis.
This is a crisis.
It's an honor. Thank you. Uh, I get to do live channel. One of the highlights, highlights of the year. Many organizations participate, make the float, make, uh, displays and service traffic control, gate control, including Danville Rotary, which I'm a member of. It's just a lot of fun to do this. Uh, I went to a similar show last year in, near Nashville, eleven Tennessee. It cost thirty dollars a car, and I don't know what it cost for us, but I thought our show just stood right up there with theirs. And, uh, so it's a great show. And Councilman Vogler, great to see you back up in town. For the last several weeks, I've looked over that side, there's always a hole in the middle. It's no, it's not there anymore. You come back, uh, we're so grateful. You got, you know, fight your way through this. And, uh, let me just tell you what I've been doing, in case, while you're calling, you were asking about the jokes. Uh, I've been doing stand-up comedy repeats in different restaurants and comedy outlets.
He ain't laughing.
Trying to get on the seasons. Last week, I bought several hours of equipment, use Zoom, broadcast, plug things. You know what I found out? I'm not even remotely funny.
I just identified Ms. Mayo. Ms. Hood, Kelly, please stand up. This is Brian's bride. Kelly Hood, please stand up. I don't know why I gotta keep asking her to stand up. Stand up, give her a hand.
Mrs. Saunders?
I think, Vice Mayor, you recognize Councilman Mayo's bride. Uh, Councilman Mayo used to be a probation officer. He is one probation. That's his probation officer tonight. Also, I, I say to Mr. Hood, I guess, are you a neck, because your bride is here watching you as well?
Okay. You on parole.
Okay. And then I say, welcome back, welcome home. Also, uh, Mr. Pace, again, we thank you for coming and for being here and looking forward to you moving to Island City. And, uh, yes, uh, in closing, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that last Thursday, I attended a Danville school board meeting. And in twenty-eight years of paying attention, that had to be one of, if not the best, meetings that I attended last week. I was very, very impressed. I was the bar, stamp, administration, Dr. Harrison, and everyone. They recognized all departments in the city, all departments. And one they recognized in particular, which they taught, the, the school bus drivers. And I've gone to many meetings around the country, and many school bus drivers don't get recognized. And I drove a school bus, aged sixteen and seventeen, eleven to twelve three, and I had sixty-six passengers. My bus number was one eighty-four. And I drove it two years safely, did not get a ticket, uh, made fifty dollars a month, one dollar for tax, and part nine dollars to take home. That's true. So thank you for doing that. Also, uh, when we weren't farming, uh, my dad was also a janitor at a school, Penn Dunk Elementary School. And we had to spend a lot of time helping him at the school. And in summertime, taking out all those chairs and desks out there and having to scrub and buff and wax the floor and put all of them back in, you know, custodians, now he's a janitor, okay? Don't get recognized like they should. But I tell you, you try to go to school and that school is not clean, does not pass the health inspection, and you got problems. You don't have enough doctors to take care of the students and the teachers. So I just simply say, you know, I, I'm just proud of everyone, I'm proud of our schools, I'm proud of what we're doing in our city. Uh, I talk about our city manager all the time, eleven hundred employees that he's in charge of. I talk about our city attorney, our clerk, and then our, uh, deputy city manager and, and everybody. We just thank you for all that you do. Our law enforcement officers, we've got the best in the world, by the way, the best in the world. And thank you all for what you do every day, and your families too. So, Mr. Mayor, I have more to say, but you said eight o'clock, and I'm about twelve minutes after that, so I'm gonna stop, okay?
Well, I'm glad you said what you said because the school board, Councilman Saunders, they thought they knew how to celebrate Dr. Harrison, but the wait to our turn, that's what I want to say. Wait till our turn. We're gonna show them how to celebrate this superintendent. Madam Clerk, back to you.
Mr. Vogler?
God is everything. God is everything. For me to be able to be here tonight, um, is, is nothing short of a miracle. For me to be able to be here tonight, um, is, is nothing short of a miracle. Um, I think back, two and a half months ago, I was being airlifted in a helicopter with burns over half my body, and, um, I was in really bad shape, and folks who saw me that day and saw me in the days after know, um, how bad it was, but, um, through the power of prayer, the thousands of prayers, I mean, we got folks from all over who were praying for me, through the power of prayer and an amazing, uh, team of folks at U.N.C. Health, um, Dr. Coward, and just all the nurses and staff, um, after a certain point in time, I turned a corner, and, um, I, I woke up, 'cause I was basically asleep for three weeks, and, um, with infections in about ninety percent of my body, and, once I woke up, it was just day by day, little by little, um, it was walking one lap around the floor, next day it was two, and it was three, and I was able to start eating some normal food. Um, one day I walked four laps, the following day I did twenty-four, then I woke up the next day and did seventy, and I never looked back, and, um, I, I'm so thankful and grateful to a number of people. Mayor, if I tried to list them all, we'd be here the rest of this month, but I do wanna, first of all, thank my family, um, and, and there's my little one, Ava waving, uh, Kingston's over on this side, and of course, uh, my wife, Blair, who was there every step of the way, she was there with me in the hospital, right there by my side, handling everything, and it helps when you got a nurse, uh, in there with you. Um, and when she wasn't there at the hospital with me, she was back home taking care of the kids and, and doing all that, so she had a lot on her plate these last few months, and when she wasn't staying with me at the hospital, my mom was staying there with me, and when Blair was staying at the hospital with me, my mom was watching the kids a lot of the time and getting them from school, and then my dad and Carolyn, uh, would come and see me and were there, and Dad is a Facebook champion, as you've seen, um, and they helped with the kids, and, um, just the, my friends, I know Josh and Emily were here, uh, earlier, they, they had the baby, they had to get out, um, and, uh, just Will and, and Austin, I see you guys here, and really everyone who's here tonight, but so many folks who, um, reached out and helped in other ways, and I know a lot of council members, you know, reached out to the family throughout this, really all of them, but, but, um, some council members really were, were very helpful, and you know who you are, and I'm very appreciative for all of that, and, um, I just, I feel, first of all, I feel blessed, again, to, to be here at all, and to be here about six months earlier than what they thought I would be, again, um, that's God. I, I mean, that. And, and, um, we have a, a GoFundMe page that, that, again, I think it's like thousands of people have donated, again, I, I, it chokes me up thinking about it, um, but, uh, we're, we're so grateful for all the help, and, and this was kind of step one, I'm back home, but I still got a long road ahead of me, I got a lot of work to do on my hands, uh, to get them back fully functional, but I know Dr. Harrison's here tonight, I'm still your middle school baseball coach, uh, my, my, uh, my next goal, as I kept telling the doctors and the nurses, is, uh, I gotta get a baseball glove on that left hand and a baseball in my right hand and get back onto that field with those kids. Um, so I'm gonna keep working. Council, it is so good to be back here with you guys tonight. I just kept thinking while I was listening to y'all, like, I've missed you guys so much, um, and so, what, what a great meeting tonight, to talk about all the positive things, I'm glad there's so much media here tonight, 'cause they got to hear about the greatness of Danville, and, um, I couldn't be prouder to be a part of this team, and, my gosh, I got to hear, uh, Ken Larkin read a poem and get to see that, that new hairdo, I mean, like, things have really changed since I've met God. Oh, but again, thank each and every one of you, and again, I, there's so many folks I, I'm sure I'm forgetting to thank, but.
Me too, dude.
I am, uh, I am beyond blessed and ready for the next phase of, um, feel like a second chance at life, and appreciate all the little things. I love you guys, and I'm happy to be back. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't go back to that.
Sorry, brother.
We have a lot of prayer in here, which is comfortable, so you sit here, and, uh, we need to go back.
Lee, I identified, I talked about, um, the wives a few minutes ago, I introduced Barry's wife, Dawn, and I introduced Kelly, but Blair, will you stand up? Uh, young lady, everybody's talked about Lee tonight, uh, I just wanna talk to you. Sherman used to tell us all the time that our families go through so much, persons don't realize what our families go through. Sure, if you ask Dr. Harrison what her family has gone through with her being a superintendent, she can give you a long story. If you ask Ma, you ask Ken, he talked about his wife earlier and his children, what he's been through as a city manager, and Lord, don't ask the mayor what he's been through, but it's that family. And, young lady, uh, the city of Danville has been amazed with the whole family, but especially with you, and how you nurtured him, and how you stuck by him, and he just spoke about him. We just wanna thank our families for what you've done. And Blair, I'm gonna close by saying this, when you get Lee home and he gets better, please remind Lee that Sherman Saunders, and I'm gonna go real slow so you could hear this, um, Sherman Saunders and myself called ourselves dancing during the National Night Hour, and we thought we would represent Lee because Dr. Miller needed some help. Blair, all of a sudden, Sherman and I felt as though we were doing pretty good until Dr. Harrison broke out with the Boogie Down production. Dr. Harrison came out there and she won the contest, so Lee, uh, we tried. We tried.
Give you A for effort.
We tried, but it's so good to have you back, and, um, then, like, the, the best part about it is having all this media here tonight to help us move Danville forward, to have this media here tonight to see the great leadership that we have, the awards that we receive, and we want you all not only just to be reporting on Lee, now y'all took some time and did a whole lot of reporting on Lee, but we want y'all to report and help us to please, please, please get the message out that there are plenty of resources in Danville, and there are other resources that are coming on board to help us to make sure Danville continue to move forward. If there's nothing else for the good, we are now adjourned.